I will call the meeting of the Riverside Township Board this November 16th. To order, please rise. And trustee Clark, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would just pause for a moment, it's shortly after Veterans Day. Let's just take a moment of silence for all those who have served our country and gave the ultimate gift. May be seated. Before we start on the items on the agenda, I just want to please have you note that Agenda item C under New Business is struck for this evening. It was a premature item on the agenda. So would you please call the roll trustee Blau?
Trustee Blau is in attendance. Trustee Clark?
Yes, present.
Trustee Hollandback?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt? Let the record note that...
Those are the people that are present.
Clerk Dropka is not in attendance this evening.
Correct, he had a personal matter, so. Thank you very much. The minutes are before you from some recent meetings. First up are the minutes of the meeting of Riverside Township Board of Trustees held on October 13th. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from October 13th, 2021.
Motion by trustee Highlandback, do I hear a second? I'll second that. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor of accepting these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Then we have the minutes of the November 2nd Committee of the Whole. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
I have a motion to accept these minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandback, to accept the minutes of the November 2nd Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. We then have the minutes of the closed session of the November 2nd Committee of the Whole meeting. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the minutes of the November 2nd closed session of the Committee of the Whole. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandback, seconded by trustee Blau, to accept the minutes of the closed session of November 2nd, 2021. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. I don't know that we have any communications because the clerk isn't here to bring them forward. Are there any public comments other than those who are here regarding a grant? Is there any public comment at this point? Questions? Hearing none. Then the first order of new business is a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Township of Riverside approving an appointment to fill the trustee vacancy on the Riverside Township Board for an unexpired term created by the resignation of Thomas A. Morrissey. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Riverside that this board hereby approves the appointment of John P. Carroll Jr. as township trustee for the term commencing November 16th and terminating on May 18th, 2025. All ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed and this resolution will be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion by trustee Blau, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the resolution, which is Resolution Number 2021-5, to approve the appointment of John P. Carroll Jr. as trustee of this township. Let's take a roll call vote on this.
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, that motion is, that resolution is adopted and therefore I would ask John P. Carroll to please come forward. And I will administer the oath of office, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John P. Carroll...
Aye, John P. Carroll Jr.
...do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of township trustee...
Of the office of township trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you supervisor.
You're very welcome. You may just sign your oath, if you can administer it and then you may join us at the table. Top line, yes. Thank you very much and welcome aboard and you can take your seat at the table and... Paperwork isn't, it's not done until the paperwork is, right? One moment, please. All right, then the next order of business is the consideration of grants and the first grant is the Prairie Trail Federation. Is there a representative here? Would you please approach the microphone, give us your name and then if you could just briefly summarize what your grant is about?
Certainly. Good evening, my name is Matthew Wolf, this is my son Edward, Edward's a fifth grader at Ames Elementary School and on behalf of the Prairie Trail Federation, we have applied for a grant. Prairie Trail Federation is a parent organization of the Indian Guides and Indian Princesses. Riverside Township is, has two tribes historically, Kiwachina is the boys and the Kachina Tribe is the girls. Over the years, we've applied for and have most been very appreciative of receiving a grant for $1,000 for each tribe. The goal of the Federation is to foster the parent and child relationship and this is done through a variety of activities throughout the course of the year. The grants of $1,000 each have been used historically to sponsor certain children and parents that would not otherwise be able to join the tribe in, due to personal economic circumstances and also have helped partially fund some activities. We have three campouts per year that are held on YMCA campgrounds in different Illinois, Wisconsin, and Indiana and then throughout the course of the year, different activities at the Scout Cabin, crafts, Pine Wood Derby, those sorts of things. So currently, the Kiwachina Tribe has 56 active members and the Kachina Tribe, that I'm not directly involved with, has a, I don't know the exact number of active participants, but it is far greater than the boys Kiwachina. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but we're just very appreciative of the township's historical support and thank you for having us.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions?
Excuse me, are all the people from Riverside Township?
Yes, vast majority. We occasionally have one or two that are, we've had people from Stickney, one from Darien this year, but the vast majority are from township, yes.
And what are some of the costs of these programs?
Certainly, so we, what the individual families pay, is that, or certainly, so we pay per family for a father and son, to speak on behalf of Kiwachina, it's $150 for a father and one child, it's an additional $25 for an additional son. So that is, that covers the majority of, we go to haunted trails and do go karts, again, Pine Wood Derby workshop that's set up at the Scout Cabin, so there are certain, you know, they do laser tag event and certain, you know, pizza party activities at the Scout Cabin that is, so we are renting the cabin frequently and, you know, just different routine expenses associated with the activities.
And is it the same for the girls?
I would, I wish I could tell you exactly, I apologize, the chief from the, from the Kachina Tribe was supposed to be here, he is not, but I would say it is very much in line with what they pay, yes.
And that's for the year?
That is for the year, correct.
And what ages?
The ages are from kindergarten until fifth grade.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
How many members do you have?
So currently, the Kiwachina, the boys tribe, has 56 active members, that includes fathers and sons in that 56 and then typically, the Kachina, the girls, has been far greater. They have great participation, I would say conservatively, they probably have double our membership.
And so 1,000 is going to go to the boys tribe, 1,000 is going to go to the girls tribe, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And part of this is going to be for scholarships?
Yes.
And how about, what else are you going to use it for rentals and so on and so forth?
Partly would be, yes, rentals, you know, there's a cost associated with the purchase of vests and patches throughout the year, but just, yes, that's really it.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? And what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the grant for Prairie Trail Federation, Inc.
Okay, I have a motion to grant the $2,000 requested to the Prairie Trail, Inc. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandback, seconded by trustee Carroll to approve this grant. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is an expenditure, so would you please call the roll?
Clerk Blau, yes. Trustee, trustee Blau, I apologize.
That's all right. Old habits die hard.
Yes. And trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Congratulations, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, the next grant consideration is for RBTV and do we have a representative here? Would you please approach the mic?
Hi, my name is Gary Prokes and I teach television production classes at Riverside Brookfield High School. And my grant was written to support three new television cameras for our Studio B over at the high school. We wanted to upgrade the equipment so that it's all HD and our last phase was to switch out or swap out the cameras for HD cameras, making that studio completely HD.
Okay. Are there any questions? Trustees?
I'd also note that most of the students that come or go through our program are also the same students who are supporting you behind the cameras this evening as well, so we have a nice partnership between the village and the high school.
It's a good training ground.
Exactly, exactly.
So they're replacing cameras that you have there already?
Yes, they were purchased in the early 2000s and right now they're being converted to HD, which is troublesome in many different levels and so we were hoping to actually purchase HD cameras. Now the school and through fundraising, we will buy the peripheral pieces that go along with that, so the monitors, the zooms, the zoom controls, the lenses and the cabling, we'll all purchase that from other resources, but we were hoping to get some support from the township for the cameras.
Okay, and it's three of these cameras, am I correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. How many studios do you have?
We have two.
Two, A and B?
Yeah, A and B, last year you helped us support the purchase of one camera for Studio A and then this year we're asking for cameras for Studio B.
Your grant application indicates the check should be written to RBTV and because RB is a taxing body, what we typically do is that we would actually pay to the vendor, so we can work that out afterwards, but I want you to make sure, I want to make sure that you understand that, that we don't write from taxing body to taxing body, we don't do that.
I understand, right.
Okay, any other questions? Then what is your pleasure with this grant?
I make the motion that we grant RBTV the money for these cameras or, you know, with the stipulation that we purchase it and give them the equipment.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll, to grant $5,385 for the purchase of three cameras for Riverside TV, Riverside Brookfield TV, sorry, and that the check would be written to the vendor. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, then would trustee Blau please call the roll?
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you and we'll be in touch to work out the details. All right, the next grant application is from People Care, Inc. Do we have somebody here? Didn't recognize you with a mask.
Yeah, I know. Good evening, thank you for having us again. I'm Judy Mantam, the executive director of People Care, Inc. I know 98% of the board is familiar with what we do, but our new trustee, Mr. Carroll, may not be. We're a local organization that was started in 1993. We work for our senior citizens within the Riverside Township. We provide free transportation for doctor's appointments, therapy appointments, chemo, radiation, quality of life appointments, which we deem the hairdresser, the barber, going to the bank for financial reasons and for, you know, financial planners and things like that. We do this all for free, utilizing volunteers within the community and besides transportation, we have a subsidized taxi voucher program. We do group grocery shopping weekly, we send out greeting cards on a very, very regular basis now, we have a quarterly newsletter and we have telephone reassurance, which has gotten to be an hugely huge portion of our program since COVID-19 started. So, and we have friendly visitors, but that's tapered off since we're not physically going into the homes of our seniors right now.
All right. So is there any questions? Thank you. What is your pleasure?
You're, I'm going over your section of operations and you're going to have a deficit this year?
You know, no, we are not. And I don't know why that is in there the way it is. As I was looking at this this afternoon, I saw that and I have the feeling when I printed it out, the packet, page two did not come along with it. We are not operating in a deficit at all. One thing I'll preface to you is our financial person, Scott Schultz, did the PPE for, so our salaries have, you know, kind of been taken care of and one of the things that's not shown in here is, last year you were kind enough to give us the extra $2,500 for our telemedicine program. It is up and running, senior citizens just aren't ready to embrace talking to their doctors through...
A screen.
A screen. We are doing one or two per week. I have, again, reorganized that and we're utilizing the iPads that we purchased to lessen the social isolation of seniors with family members that live out of state and out of the country. So we'll take that iPad in, we set them up on a Zoom meeting or FaceTime and they get to talk to their family members for 40 minutes. And again, we do the same thing we were doing with telemedicine, we leave the room, we give them their privacy, all they have to do is hit the off button and they're done. We're doing that more and more frequently, it's been a godsend to have that for them. The other thing is, is you won't see it on here, is I negotiated with Comcast to get our free data, but I decided to hold off on that until 2022 and we're using actually my data plan because I want to be able to utilize it to its fullest benefit with the free data. I don't want to just have free data for two or three times a week, being cheap, I guess.
Frugal, frugal.
So frugal, yes, frugal. So, you know, you won't see the expense of that in this because I'm keeping those monies for when we have to pay for it.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Well, this is a great program that the township has been a proud sponsor of for many years. I make a motion that we approve the grant of $10,000 to People Care.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandback to grant the $10,000 grant to People Care. Do I hear a second?
So moved.
I have a second. I have a motion by trustee Highlandback, seconded by trustee Blau, to award $10,000 grant to People Care, Inc. for this fiscal year. Any other discussion to the motion? Hearing none, then please call the roll.
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And I know our seniors thank you too.
Okay. All right, the next application is from the Riverside Fire Department.
Good evening, Jim Mulligan with the Riverside Fire Department. The application that we submitted is for replacement of some rescue equipment on our engine that is housed on the other side of the tracks. The rescue equipment is used for lifting potentially vehicles in an event of a structural collapse, it could lift heavy loads, which obviously may be on top of somebody. We originally have this equipment that was purchased back in, manufactured back in 1998. The manufacturer no longer services the equipment, it expired technically in 2013 and as well as along with those lines, we also have a newer technology that we're able, the initial bags that we have now, you have to stack on top of each other and they don't give you the amount of lift or lifting capacity as the new bag that we are putting in for right now. So the original bags that we have on right now only lift 21.8 tons, whereas the new one is 31.6 tons.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have, are you getting, what are you getting, are you getting the multi-force, the whole kit or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a remote kit, so where we have now, the original bags, you actually have to place under the vehicle where this one has an actual handle on it, so you could slide it underneath the vehicle or whatever you're lifting, so it keeps us out of harm's way a little bit more, so that we're not actually sticking anything underneath the...
And this has a higher lift rate than the others, am I correct?
That is correct, yeah, and higher lifting height as well.
And you also use this in your mutual aid?
Yeah, so all the towns, obviously the, within the border of Riverside, we would go to Riverside, Brookfield, North Riverside and Lyons as well for mutual aid.
And the other expiration, how are the other bags that you have, are they within, they're not expiring, am I correct?
The, well, so this one would replace all three of them, which are all expired, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's one bag replacing three bags?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I have no further questions, Supervisor Wilt.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the grant for the Riverside Fire Department in the amount of $9,030.
Can we make a second motion and say that we're going to purchase it?
Once again, it would be to the vendor?
Right, we will purchase it to...
To Air One?
Yes.
Okay.
The check will be made out to Air One.
Okay, I have a motion to award this grant of $9,030 and to be paid to the vendor for the Riverside Fire Department. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Carroll. So I have a motion by trustee Highlandback, seconded by trustee Carroll, to award the Riverside Fire Department the grant of $9,030 for the lift bag. Any other discussion to the motion? Then would you please call the roll?
Clerk Blau, yes. Trustee Blau? Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Now you have a vote.
Thank you.
Motion carried, thank you.
Hopefully you'll never have to use them.
The next grant is the North Riverside Public Library.
Hello, everyone, I'm Natalie Storost, I'm the director over at the library. We are asking for angled shelving, so our bottom shelves on our stacks, you know how the library stacks go, it's very difficult for people, especially if they have any kind of disability, to see the spines on the bottom shelf. So we're working on addressing our equity, diversity, and inclusion programs and this is one of the things that we targeted as something we can do to help people who may have vision disabilities or mobility disabilities or anything along those lines, just angling the shelves up so they can actually read the spines, they don't have to get up and get, go down and up, up and down, frequently to try to get things, they know where they are, they can see where these items are and it's very easy for them to locate it instead of making them more difficult and less accessible.
And this would cover the whole library?
It does not cover the whole library, this will be the beginning of, we will be starting out in the adult services in the areas that have, we have tried to move things off the lower shelves, so in a lot of places, we don't have anything on the lower shelves, but in fiction and nonfiction, it's really difficult to do that because we have so many items. So we will be starting out with those areas.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to grant the North Riverside Public Library their request of $4,119.80 and once again, this is another taxing body, so...
Right.
The check will be made out to the vendor.
Right, in this case, it does actually say purchased on behalf of the North Riverside Public Library, so, so we'll work out with the vendor information. And I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandback, to award the North Riverside Public Library a grant in the amount of $4,119.80 and do I hear any other discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll, trustee?
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and finally, we have Beds Plus.
Hi there, my name is Molly Price and I'm the representative from Beds Plus. It's actually my seventh day with the organization.
Baptism by fire.
We have a board meeting tonight and our executive director is at that board meeting, so they sent me as a representative. I am... so they sent me as a representative. I am a development manager with the organization. So I just wanted to quickly read that Beds Plus Cares' mission is to help vulnerable individuals stabilize their lives through housing and supportive services. It provides evidence-based prevention and stabilization, emergency and supportive housing services to people experiencing homelessness and imminent risk of homelessness in southwest suburban Cook County. And then I wanted to just quickly go through specify anticipated benefits to township residents. Beds helps Riverside Township's clients, township clients regain and sustain housing, manage the causes and effects of homelessness, and access supportive healthcare, behavioral healthcare, and human services. Last year, it served 65 Riverside Township residents. Due to COVID's, COVID-19's continued socioeconomic effects, Beds anticipates reaching 80 to 100 unique individuals over the period of the grant. So we were seeking a $2,000 grant.
I know that I refer a lot of people that come to us for help, so.
Okay, good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, and I know everyone on our team was telling me to make sure we thank you for your continued support throughout the years. And I'm supposed to plug our event. That is a pop-up bar event. It's, it's a, it's a Wonderful Life themed event. So it's at Joe's Saloon in Brookfield on 47th, if anyone is able to come. What day? Good, good question. It's December 3rd and 4th, which is the first weekend of December.
Oh, two days.
Two days, either day. Please come either day. It is not. It's a, it's an evening event, 7 to 11.
Okay. Are there any questions, or what is your pleasure?
I make a motion to grant Beds Plus Care Inc. the grant for $2,000.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, I'm sorry, by trustee Blau. Do I hear a second?
I have a question before.
Sure.
We go to the second. You said you've served, you've served 65 people from Riverside Township. And this, are there other people you serve from other townships?
Yes, I know that we are in Cook County, so I don't really know what I'm doing.
Okay.
I've got to be honest.
They do serve, I know Lyons Township.
Lyons Township, thank you.
Lyons Township.
A significant amount of people in Lyons Township.
I think your center is located in Lyons Township.
It is, it's true.
On Ogden and East Avenue there.
It is, right, yes.
And I believe Proviso Township also has some activity too.
I know that we're building another building in Summit, which.
Oh, great.
Yeah, which I believe.
Which is still Lyons Township.
It's still Lyons Township.
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
So the.
So the current building is in La Grange, technically at the corner of Ogden and East, and it is at the cor, at the edge of Brookfield and La Grange. And then we are building another in Summit. We are housing homeless right now in two hotels in the area, and we're trying to rehouse quickly homeless individuals or people who have recently lost their, their home. So that's our main focus right now because big shelter, the kind of big shelter scenario isn't as realistic anymore because of COVID-19, and people are really close together in close quarters, and infectious disease quickly spreads because of that.
All right, I'll second this motion.
I promise I'll be able to answer any questions through emails.
You did fine.
And, and it's nice of you not to be too hard on me.
That's all right.
We're very familiar with Beds Plus.
Okay.
We have a motion by trustee Blau, seconded by trustee Clark, to grant the $2,000 grant to Beds Plus Care Inc. And are there any further questions before we call the roll? Hearing none, then trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
And supervisor Wilt, yes. So that motion carries, and congratulations, and we will be in touch.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. All right, and those of you who are finished with our business, you're most welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to stay. All right. Unless, I mean, after the meeting, if you really want to stick around, we could create, we could do a presentation of a big check, but we could do that at another time if you like as well. Okay, then that is the end of our grants. And the next order of business, excuse me, we have deleted item C. So the next item is the food pantry gift cards for Thanksgiving. We, we approved at our last meeting $45 gift cards for those participating in the food pantry, rather than giving turkeys and all the fixings. We've been, we have purchased and been giving out $45 gift cards, and we wanted to consider whether that is adequate for Christmas too, because our meeting isn't until into December. I would like to have that decision in advance. I will say we had increased it from 35 to 45, and people have been extremely grateful. So I think that it's a, it's a good amount, but if you feel that we should go higher, this would be the opportunity.
Do we want to grant it to 50 for Christmas?
I would leave it straight 45 all the way through. I think that, you know, it's $5, a can of soup is costing $5 now. So, or we could make it 50. If we're going to make it 50, we make it 50 for both, whatever we're going to do.
Well, we've already handed out probably 15 or more.
Okay, then for Christmas, we can up it to 50 because the food prices are skyrocketing right now. Want people to have, our residents have a good thing, our Christmas and Thanksgiving too.
Okay, so do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure. I make a motion that we make the gift cards for Christmas to $50.
Do I hear a second? Okay, I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to make the Christmas gift cards $50. And we will finish out November with the $45 ones for Thanksgiving. Any further discussion? Then this is an expenditure, so I would call the roll. Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Blau's out of the room. Supervisor Wilt, yes. So motion is carried, and that will be $50 for Christmas. All right. As the supervisors report, I, you know, we've been, we've been busy with all kinds of items going on. I've been working on the levy. I've been answering a lot of inquiries about general assistance and emergency assistance. This week has been quite busy. I don't know, as I said, Friday's a full moon, so that tends to bring a lot of extra inquiries usually. But I don't have anything else terribly specific to report, other than the usual business going on in the township. Of course, we met and interviewed eight candidates for this trustee position, so we're very happy to welcome trustee Carol to our board. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Then trustees reports.
I have a question.
Yes.
How's the food pantry?
Food pantry, so I will say that a couple of organizations have put out the word to their members, and we have had a lot of donations lately, especially in-kind donations. Not, I mean, we've had some financial, but we've gotten a lot of canned goods. So I'm very grateful to the organizations that have done that and, you know, put out the alert, because honestly, our custodians are busy every day bringing stuff up to the pantry and sorting and then filling bags. So for a while, it was touch and go.
Yeah, do we still need chicken and tuna?
We always need proteins of all kinds. That includes beans, chicken, tuna, whatever kinds of salmon, whatever kinds of proteins. And, you know, we, we certainly do peanut butter and jelly and, and all kinds of, we always make sure that there's vegetables, fruit, some kind of starches, and something to go with those starches, whether it's, you know, spaghetti and sauce or whatever. So unfortunately, our facilities do not allow for fresh produce, but occasionally we get something donated that we move out right away. We, we recently had some frozen baked goods that were like heat and serve type things that we kept in the freezer, and then we, we managed to get those, that week, to those who came in. Occasionally, we get some bread or something, but we don't have refrigeration facilities here. So we also refer a lot of people that do want more fresh things to the Presbyterian Church, their little food pantry, and other facilities around. We, we sometimes get inquiries, and we only serve Riverside Township, so we can't serve anyone that's outside our boundaries. So then we refer them to other pantries as well. And I will say that the nurses closet has been very busy. You know, this time of year, people stiffen up and fall and things like that happen, so that's been extremely busy as well. Any other? Okay. Then we'll go with our trustees. And trustee Blau, do you have anything to report?
None at the present time.
Thank you. Trustee Clark?
I just want to say the senior exercise class that meets on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at noon is going very well. I think in the month of October, we had 273 participants.
And this, this month has gotten to be a big turnout, too.
So we generally have between 20 and 22 on Mondays and Wednesdays, and between 17 and 20 on Fridays.
Within the last week, I will tell you that we had one day when we had 28 people.
Oh, wow.
And a 24 and a 26, so, yeah. The word is out, and, yes, so that's been a very successful program. Thank you. Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes, good evening, trust, fellow trustees. I am very pleased to announce that our Community Resource Center was awarded the Innovative Program of the Year by the Township Officials of Illinois. It's a very big honor, very big honor. And we're going to have the awards presentation tomorrow at the, at the Mental Health Board meeting. I invite you all to come in and, and see that, the presentation, and stay for the meeting if you'd like. It's very interesting. Joe DeRosa.
DeRoser. DeRoser.
DeRoser, who was confirmed by this board last month, has officially joined as a director, and we're very happy to have him. He's got a lot of experience, and he seems to catch on pretty quickly with just one meeting, so we're very happy to have him. Joe Tracianni, our consultant, and I met with the Brookfield Police Chief and for CIT training, crisis intervention training. We've met with Public Safety Director Buckley. We're going to try and get a class together for North Riverside, Riverside, and Brookfield, and we're going to hold it here at the Township Hall. I've had preliminary discussions with supervisor Wilt on this, and we're looking at maybe February. This training is very, very vital to the community, especially with the police officers, especially with the mental health crisis going on right now. So we're looking forward to getting board approval on that and going on. And we're also going to be discussing plans for the Community Resource Center. They don't get, you know, we were open on Saturdays thinking we would get some people in on Saturdays. They haven't had any. So that's because the township is, you know, the off, the Township Hall is closed, and they had nobody. So we're working on ways, which will be discussed tomorrow, on how to move, you know, use their, this resource, maybe some outreach, maybe we'll use Riverside TV, maybe we'll put an ad in the paper, whatever the case may be. We're starting to pick up, we're getting more and more people using the CRC. And with this 988 program coming on, I have offered the services of our CRC to the local police departments for follow-up, so they can figure, you know, follow up and say, okay, is, is John okay? Does he need some help? We can help you with this. Here's some information for you, or can we make a call? So that's going to be discussed tomorrow as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I know you just came on about half an hour ago, so I don't know if trustee Carol has anything to.
I would say thank you for the opportunity to serve with the board, and I'm looking forward to the next few years of working with you all. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, so we've had the trustees' reports and the mental health report, unfinished business. Regarding the Swinging Bridge, there was, I just, was copied in on some more correspondence between the, the architect and the one contractor who was supposed to be sending in a bid, and we still haven't seen that. So there, I was just checking my email to see if there was any response, and there has not been any from that contractor. So I don't have any, anything more to report on that. The next item, however, unless you have some questions on that. Oh, I did, actually, I did have a call from, someone from an organization that actually works with contractors looking for projects, and they had read about the bridge, and had done just very preliminary outreach to say that they thought that there might be, might be something that they could help with. Were supposed to get back to me, and that was supposed to be within a few days, and it's been about two weeks. So I, I don't know if I'm going to hear more from them, but it had to do with, you know, like I said, working, they work with contractors to find jobs, and they also felt that there might be some grant money, possibly for such, such a project. So that is going to be in the spring at the earliest because the, the winter weather has set in, so we'll see where we go from there. Any other questions about the Swinging Bridge repairs?
Vera, they, the TOI conference today, they talked about the money that they were going to get from the feds, and we might be able to get some grant money out of that.
Right, right. I did, I did listen in on that session as well, and we can only hope. So next item then is the township meeting dates and holidays for 2022. We briefly looked at this last month, and the consensus was that we wanted to look at over a little bit more. The one item I would, I think the meeting dates we're okay on, the only change would be, actually, they're all the second Wednesday except April, when it's the second Tuesday, which by law is the date of the annual town meeting, and doesn't seem to make sense to have two meetings in a row. So we will, we will do that one on April 12th, but otherwise, those dates are, seem to be compatible and don't interfere with any other events. But the question is the dates that we will close for holidays. As you can see on the report, there are a couple of dates that are newly, newly placed on the calendar at the fed or state or both level. I note that, okay, November already has the, the Thanksgiving holidays when we close for both Thursday and Friday, because nothing gets done on that Friday anyway. But this, the new holidays would put in another one in November for General Election Day. We can do either Election Day or Veterans Day, but they fall in the same week, and I would not recommend doing both. And I thought we would just go with the Election Day, but staff seems to think that that's a good day for us to be here. that's a good day for us to be here anyway because there's a lot of traffic through the building. So, yeah, so we would probably not take that as a holiday even though Illinois has declared it a state holiday for that day, but, you know, this is a polling place, so we might as well be open. So in that case, I would think that we would strike Veterans Day. The Village is, was open this year on Veterans Day, so the building was active anyway. So I would recommend that. And then the other holiday that's a new one is Juneteenth and that would be observed on Monday, the 20th. So that would, that would add an extra holiday. The other one, we're trading one out. So what is your pleasure?
Well, Juneteenth is a federal holiday, am I correct?
Yes.
It's become a federal?
It is, it was a federal holiday this year and in 2022, it becomes an Illinois State Holiday as well.
Okay, and you want to, Juneteenth is all right by me, that's me personally. But you want to close on, you want to be closed on or open on Election Day and closed on Veterans Day?
I mean, it's a possibility so that we don't have two holidays in one week.
Right, well, I would say we would keep Veterans Day as a holiday.
Okay.
And not bother with the General Elections Day because we have a lot of people coming into this building. You know, maybe we can, I mean, some may need some help with some stuff. That's just my opinion though.
Yeah, I agree that everybody needs to be here on Election Day because there's so many people coming in and out.
Okay, so we would be open on, on Election Day and closed on Veterans Day?
There you go.
All right. Okay. So we're adding a day and trade, and basically keeping the holidays and not taking on the November 8th, Illinois General Election Day.
Yeah.
Okay?
So do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the Township Calendar for the year 2022, our meeting dates and the holidays.
And that would include the second page, that is the, we set the Committee of the Whole meetings for the first Tuesday of each month and if we don't have any business to conduct, then we call that off, but this way it's posted as a regular meeting. Right? So that would be part of the motion?
So I'll add to my motion, the Committee of the Whole meetings for the calendar year 2022.
Okay. Then if I could, you have, you've moved that, do I hear a second to that motion?
So moved.
The motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Blau, to set the Township Calendar for the year 2022, including regular meeting dates, Committee of the Whole dates, and holidays for the office, as presented here and as discussed. Any discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you. And just preliminarily, we, I would like to have the Committee of the Whole meet next month so that we can firm up and propose the levy. Levy is very tricky this year because the CPI is only 1.4. All the municipalities around us have been going for 4% to 5% anyway because the county will, will pull back on that and we don't want to lose out on the potential of some new construction that there is in the township as well. So I would like to have further discussion on it before we propose it to the next meeting, but that's, the direction I'm going is probably higher than the CPI. And even though we're supposed to stick with the lower of them, we would actually calculate it, present the levy at a little higher rate and let the county adjust and pull us back. And actually, I would not increase the levy, however, for general assistance because that, you know, the current levy is adequate for that, but we would be looking at mental health and the township. So again, I would stress that we really will have our Committee of the Whole on the first Tuesday of the month. Okay? And that's all I have, unless anybody has any other questions regarding that topic. And then we can move to the approval of the warrants. You have the warrants in your packet. And what is your pleasure?
Trustee Hollenbach moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for October 2021 in the amount of $14,983.60, as presented to the, to the board the 16th day of November 2021.
I have a motion to approve the general warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Blau, to approve the general warrant in the total amount of $14,983.60. Any discussion? If not, would you please call the roll? Trustee Blau?
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of the warrants?
Motion by trustee Hollenbach that the board ratify and authorize payment in the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for $1,270.96. The payroll warrant in the amount of $22,169.24. The health warrant in the amount of $2,265.37. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $3,520. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $2,174.84. All of the above is presented to the board this 16th day of November 2021.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Blau, to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,270.96. The payroll warrant in the amount of $22,169.24. The health warrant in the amount of $2,265.37. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $3,520. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $2,174.84. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then please call the roll.
Trustee Blau, yes. Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That concludes the order of business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Hollenbach, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you and good night.